Public housing things I want to to your. For people that have been joining us in the future by Zoom, the you don't have a link anymore. What you get is a meeting number and it should be on the village website and it should be on our agenda. So all you do is go to Zoom site and enter the meeting number. And as soon as the guy's pulled it up, you'll be able to get it. So I'm gonna have to pop you with setting everybody's numbers and stuff. There's a mechanism for already played say village and that's how it works. The other thing is that if the meeting is over the two thousand public party calendar for a few minutes. Alex is with us right now. Okay, so moving right along public hearing agenda and there's nothing. So we're session agenda. The first application is five fifty five by four thousand three. That is the judge till the next meeting on December nineteenth.
Yeah, there was a request to adjourn that to the other nineteen. Um, I think that request was at the last meeting where I know it was at limited time, but I think we gotta adjourn to this meeting. Um, but we've got nineteen to adjourn to the whole meeting.
Oh. Alright, so I'd like to move hopefully adjourn the.
I'll give it a mark.
Subdivision move to our five thousand five or six to December nineteenth.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, favor favor? Thank you.
Turn it down. Does that monitor have a speaker?
Next thing up is heavy creepy. L C's.
I think it does.
And we're here to discuss this information. Take it away.
Okay, um, so we had a review.
Can we give my screen back?
Sure, sure. So this is the short assessment, a short environmental assessment form part two, which is the impact assessment. And we have reviewed the action and environment to the various environmental resource areas that are that I did under C P R. And, uh, all of the items, as you can see in the left-hand column, are no or small impact may occur as related to the, um, the subdivision or the lot line modification, which was transferring small area from lot one to lot two. Um, so based on that, there is no need for additional analysis on the part of the applicant. Uh, no need for really completion of a part three. Um, and, um, and based on that, we recommend doing that in May Dex we adopted. And that would allow the, um, the applicant to move ahead with their health department application because that's one of the required items, um, of the health department application.
Yeah, yeah, I have one question. I have not, I apologize, not to go over and walk, walk in there and see what it is. At least another one was related to all this. If you were any of expert who works for you, take a look at the whole picture. Cause it's just these two lots that makes sense on happy with the proposal. But there's a runway and there's another lot to take the south possibly, um, slightly to the west. Does it make sense for that area, which is, you know, the end of that road, dead ends in the heavy creek and it's just. We have other stuff up and down that area. It's an important. Edge of the village area. Across this, this reservation.
Mm-hmm, um, I think it makes sense for Alex, if you could bring up the map. Um, but what it does show is that there's a driveway easement that's on lot one.
Yep.
Um, that's not going to change, that area is not going to change. And that stone driveway does continue into a lot that is not shown on the transfer map. So that's a separate property.
Yep.
Um, and so that's not affected. This, this here, there's an area, a little triangular area, um, labeled A that is being transferred from lot one to lot two.
Right.
Um, and it's along the waterfront there. It's the, um, yeah, you can see the, the area, um, sort of in the middle that's, uh, being transferred.
What part works? As I just wondered, do that lot going to the next lot on the left? Is this, I assume it makes sense, doesn't affect access to any, any, any else. But it seems to me to review this, we constantly totally distinguish that we gotta look outside the immediate confines of what's there. What else is affected? Is that affecting the other one at all?
No, no, it doesn't.
That's why it's funny. Okay.
It, um, it does, it, uh, you know, it provides this extra land along Hedy Creek to lot, uh, two. And, um, based on the discussion that we had, um, Linda Riley had explained that they had always had a, um, informal access to Hedy Creek. Um, but they want to make that, you know, I guess it was some kind of a, an agreement that they had on paper, but it was not, you know, part of the law. And, uh, they want to make it permanent.
Thank you.
I guess I have an issue with, um, either by obtaining the, with the proposed action, this, this, all the approach to any existing water body. The way I see this property is very sensitive. Blackland issues and what I can see on a, a brief Google map, look, they, they go along right now. Being moved to the large. And, um, that, that great, great effect. It is, is approaching that in a lot, a lot of water body. And just wondering, does this board have any? I mean, do you need to get like, like the, the South South and Townhouse meeting involved in this sort of thing? Um, because, because, you know, there's the, the, the people who, um, own lot two or sort of are joining us. Lot line agreement changing now and it's, it's, it looks to me, it means being moved right up to the waters. Which means that it's probably been verified as a very, very, although there's an, our, our. Resistant. So how do you, how do you deal with that, that, do you deal with that as a, as a support?
Uh, Alex, did you want to speak to that?
Is that Alex or Alex?
Uh, Alex.
Um, okay. Uh, I mean. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not totally sure, uh, where you go with that. Um. Are you suggesting that there's some sort of violation?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, because if you're concerned that there's a violation, then certainly.
Is there a violation yet?
It should be brought to the building department. Um, if there's a D E C violation, then it can be referred to the D E C. But in terms of this board's purview in connection with the lot line modification, um, perhaps an argument could be made that some sort of, uh, buffer or restriction has a condition of approval in connection. Well, lot line modification might be appropriate because there is a potential for increasing holdout on one of the lots as a result of where if one engine there for some sort of offset that benefit in the water body, uh, could be, you know, recently related to be really requested. But, you know, beyond that, this board doesn't have enforcement power, so it would really be, um. If there was a violation, I would, I would suggest that either you know, the building department or the D E C be notified.
Well, if they are mowing up to the, to the, um, to the shoreline, it would be a violation of, you know, Article twenty-five on D E C. You know, they're taking D E C title weapons.
Yeah, there it is. That's what I see. So it's really hard to tell. I can't tell if that is against the law under the water or if that's a lot of my friends and that, but it looks like it's law. And just maybe conscious feel that objection. So you can see it's going to the south.
Look, this is the mirror map, so this is twenty twenty-two, right?
This is October fifteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so. Yeah, yeah. Over and over again. Google. Still working on this. Um. So where does that leave us?
Uh, well, I, I don't think that that sort of affects the determination of significance. Um, which is what we were talking about tonight. Um, you know, I think that we could just discuss moving forward, discuss a, 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 with the applicant and discuss whether or not it would be appropriate to impose such a condition. Um, Kathy, maybe, maybe it makes sense to get checked away on, away in on this formally.
I can do that, yep.
Would, would be a, a negative subject to notification of every order of D E C.
Uh, well, no, uh, the, the negative declaration would just be on the determination of significance. And we would not be approving the application at this time and any approval could contain conditions of approval.
Okay, so this is, it's pretty, pretty normal.
Well, I, I just, you know, my, my answer to your question, would, would the proposed action, is it, is it overall where order code to any existing water body? The water body should be next.
Well, is it the proposal section or is it the present action?
Well, it's proposed. The way I think is once it's proposed, it's, it's going to approach because it isn't, it's, so, but your, your counsel, so, so is that not, not the way?
Uh. Proposals for lot line amendment, which is not a particular type of development, it's just a moving of a property line.
It might be the right time to make this suggestion though, because there may not be another time to make it. So I, I think Tony's got, um, a good concern. Okay, I can, I mean, I can talk to Chip Borie to see if, um, if he has a suggestion for how we would move forward. I just, it's not, um, as far as, you know, saying that there is a violation or is not a violation. Uh, but he was on the property, uh, back in March, so he will have some observations, I believe, so.
Okay. He also asked, uh, he just asked out that, that the applicants are trying to. You know. Oh, fine, well, you know, just tell us, because it's a factual inquiry too. Aside from jurisdiction, we have jurisdiction with D E C, you know, we don't have enforcement jurisdiction, but, but have they done anything or not? And, and, you know, because I know there's turns also in history about how long, you know, something's been there. And D E C looks at historic records, things like that, but, um, you know, maybe we should also, you know, for the next thing being asked out there. Can you ask them?
This, this, do, is the history by brief views and just more with approval of environmental firm, take this some kind of, and if that's true, everything is fine. But usually not the case, proving environmental, which does come in, you know, stronger than regulations or anything, then everything else is satisfied. With us, because it's often not for us in, in giving you a deck. It's just, it's, it's, it's jurisdictional level. So.
Okay.
That's not an L S issue.
Is, is Linda Riley on?
Uh, let's see. Nope, I don't have a Linda Riley in here. I have a Brendan O'Reilly.
Uh, no.
No, that's not it, okay, sorry.
I'm not. I, I, I kind of want to say more, I'm just. I, I, I'm not prepared to. I have, have, like, better answer to this. Um, it just seems like, like. Once that lot line is, there, there will be some sort of, sort of, an environmental situation change.
So, um, why don't we just table the discussion until the next meeting? That's fine, Kathy, you don't have any objection, I assume?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not even sure Kathy that we received, I'm sorry, I'll let you speak in a moment. Um, I'm not even sure that we received all of the information that we had requested on this file anyway, so I think that's fine.
That's right, we haven't.
The good news is that we meet every two weeks. I don't want to put any burden on the, on the, but I, I.
Well, the decision issue that you brought up the first time around, um, we were talking about where that line was on the map and it, it was, uh, very stark. How close it was to the water, so certainly.
Okay, alright, so. What would, what motion we do?
Uh, to adjourn to the next meeting.
So I'd like to move, we adjourn the secret determination to the December nineteenth. All.
Um, Alex.
Thank you. Okay, um, number three on subdivision review is forty-one, part of ours is lot line. Yeah. Lot line modification. Request for extension. Oh, that's, that's the letter from Gil.
Yeah.
And the letter, the letter that's worth extension.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, it's a very brief extension. I believe it's just to April, is that right?
Yeah. Yes.
Um, yeah, April.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So I'd like to move the exact application request for extension to one of our equal thousand thousand.
How about a little, let me make a specific date, we make it the second meeting in April?
Monday is seventeenth, April seventeenth or April third?
Seventeenth.
Yeah, that would give that more. Okay, so April seventeen. Sure. Okay. I'd like to move that we grant the applicant's request for extension to our April seventeen.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. Okay.
Hi. Um, hi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, next thing, our agenda is site plan review for four thousand one hundred and ninety. Um. I'm a little confused by this. Is, is there anything?
This is a pending site plan application. I've reached out to the applicant on, on multiple, uh, occasions to ask for an update, whether they have any custom conditional determines or whether they're active supervised plan and we've not heard a response yet.
Okay, so, so let's just keep it on and we'll, 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 or something. Does that make sense or we can't, can't take it off until we hear from them?
Right, yeah, I wouldn't want to take it off or, you know, just deny it without, uh, hearing from the applicant, whether, you know, they're moving forward or not. Um, so I would think we should adjourn it to a, you know, a specific date and give the applicant a half opportunity, um, to let the board know how they intend to proceed.
Okay, okay.
Some point, I don't know, some point. Die.
Well, I mean, the board could, um, you know, dismiss the application without prejudice. I, I, I don't know that we're, we're there yet.
Okay, okay.
Um, but certainly that, that is an option.
I can, I can. This is, I think, the time, the time.
Sure, you want to give him a little more time, give him a little time to do here?
Sure, yeah, yeah. So, so maybe adjourn to the, the February, the first February?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay. So I'd like to move that we adjourn the site plan review for the, for the, to our February six.
Six.
Six. Meeting.
I'll show you that.
Oh, favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. And if we hear anything in time, we can pick. Zig, zig, zig.
Yeah, I'll let the board know if we hear any update enough.
Okay, okay. I think that works. Um, so we have some minutes we can approve?
A little, a little, a little.
For November twenty-first and then our two others, like just check on.
Is Hardman Hamster found the agenda or no?
It's, um, I also may have an older version of the agenda. The hardment was approved at the last meeting, so I don't think there's anything pending for that, less than a second. And just create version three at the bottom.
Or five, or version two.
Tony, do you need dates? I have October seventeenth and November twenty-first are both ready for, for.
Yeah, yeah. And I would like to move we approve both states. Second. All.
Okay, shall we talk about the meeting calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, Alex said in the camera room, seems to indicate you weren't wanting to judge.
In D E D.
Okay, that's what I thought. The rest of it seems to be good use of the challenge. And occasionally some conflict, look, look. Nothing up there anywhere, and then we, we, we.
No, we're going to six day, we're going to six o'clock. It's Tuesday. Well, I, I was just going to ask Alex, is it available, like all of these conflicts are Mondays, why couldn't they just do two to six?
We'd have to, um, just make sure that the zoning board, who sometimes has Tuesday meetings, isn't meeting on those Tuesdays.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and have to make sure that there's no other, uh, conflict. Uh, but that could be an option that I thought I wanted to discuss, uh, with the board. I think there's, uh, four, five meetings that can play with the, with Monday holidays for twenty twenty-three, including both, uh, meetings in January, one meeting in February.
Yeah, yeah. Um. I, I am, we not, not having for entire month, it seems a long, a long time. And we're here to serve.
Uh, well, I mean, it's not ideal.
I think we should try to get one, one, oh, oh, not one, six, six, four, Daniel. I, I have a ton of control this year, yeah, yeah. Sixteen, seventeen, I have, I have, I have. Yeah, I, I.
We're not gonna have that meeting though.
Yeah, the village hall is closed by January sixteen, so I need to.
Well, I, I mean, that, 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 so we did all seventeen. Still not, but, but, um. You, you, you want to, you want to be like stopping at some point this week and we'll look at it together or?
Yeah, we can discuss it now, we could, we could do that during, uh, the week. I don't, you know, whatever is most convenient, I'm just looking at the calendar right now, it looks like the third, um, January third may be available. Um, and you guys will be in contact for, for the seventeenth.
Yeah, but that's a page, that's a word of order here. Is it available?
Um, I don't think we have, um, zoning board meetings scheduled that day. The other issue, we're also scheduling the zoning board's, um, twenty twenty-three calendar at the same time. So I don't think we, we schedule, um, but actually no, we have scheduled the January meetings are going to be the tenth to the twenty-sixth. So there wouldn't, there shouldn't be conflict from the seventeenth, but we won't get a plan for January seventeenth instead of the sixteenth. Then we, we could have one meeting in January if we need that sufficient. Plus the board will do the third and the seventeenth.
I don't know what the. Um, alright, why don't we, especially coming off of that holiday week, I, I just, the third is, is, nobody's got anything. The applicants. So why don't we just have one, one in the January, January or seventh? And that gets us started to figure out the rest of the year here.
Sure, yeah, we can, and I, and I realize the time now says, um, six o'clock, do you want to stick with five thirty?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, I see, then we'll, we'll fix that.
Okay, five thirty on one seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, just to be clear, I think all of them, you shouldn't remain at five thirty unless there's a recent change.
Gotcha, okay, so we'll, we'll plan for the rest from it, um, at five thirty and then we have the December, uh, the next meeting in December. We can take a look and adopt, um, for the rest of the, of the year.
Alex, if you send it out now, I mean, if you send it out, that's a first, you should get it, please.
Uh, yeah, I'll send out a final version, um, because we'll, we'll want to make sure that it's posted on the website, on the, on the calendar as well.
Thank you.
So does the board have to make a motion to cancel the January, maybe the January second or just because it's closed?
I don't know if there, if there was a January second, uh, meeting for twenty twenty-three, but maybe it's a good idea to make a motion to at least set the January seventeenth. Uh, do you want to?
Call, call. Um, I'd like to move that we. Cancel our, um, one day January second meetings.
And, and, and the January sixteen meeting to January seventeen.
Move to January sixteen to January seventeen at five, five P M, P M. Can I get a second?
Seventeen.
I'll pay a favor.
Hi.
Okay, okay.
Um.
Um, I just, I just, one more thing I want to discuss with counsel, on the record, that, um, some of the board members have been talking about. We're wondering if we could get some language about sort of, um, civil discourse during meetings. Um, is there, is there a lot of flaws that we could drop, drop there? Just to have to have that also publicly.
Okay, what, what are you, what's your concern?
My concern is specifically that, that people understand that, um, there are going to be instances where if. If an advocate or the representative, they're off of what I would consider professional civil forum that, that they're going to have to stop. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, um.
Within, within, I mean, within reason, but if, 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 if things go to a personal level, to me, that's a reason to shut down the discussion, so.
I, I agree, um, well, we could, we can put in something about how, you know, comment should be addressed directly to the board. Uh, you know, for the members of the audience in public, um, that people are required to identify themselves in a address. Um, and, uh, you know, it's a civil tone, it's appreciated, no personal comments, something like that.
Alex, I know the, the U S Courts website has some, uh, ground rules about civil discourse, maybe it makes sense to, to borrow, or from some of that language and work it up as a policy if it felt appropriate.
Um.
This is why.
Yeah, okay.
So, so, I, 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 I don't want to, um, be in a situation where someone's able to say, you're calling me, no, no, not science house, or just, it should be for every, every.
Yeah.
And it should be a reminder, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good, I think, you know, I think the fact that we adopted our policies and that they're on the agenda is, is helpful information. People know what to expect and some people do come at his board meetings, they've never been to one before, they don't know what, you know, what to expect. They don't know that they shouldn't address, you know, their paper, that they should address the board, so, yeah, that'd be helpful, okay.
Can, can anybody else want to add to that or?
I think there were some concerns about panel observing time limits, if there are time limits or refraining from talking over each other, or talking over board members and just to, um, you know. I think along the lines of the, you know, what, what happens in a courtroom or other tribunals where you have to conduct yourselves professionally and respect that.
Except that in a courtroom, everyone is a professional. Whereas here, they, 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 they're citizens, they have the right to sit in their government and they don't have to be professionals, they have to be civil.
Civil.
But they don't have to be professional.
Understood, but civility is, is issue here.
Yeah.
For, for me, for me. I just, I just.
Well, yeah, the two, the two big issues is rising for, you know, the dress, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's. you mentioned, the, 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 the dress, the poor people stuffing their, you know, they, they, they can't clean their, their, and if that's, if they, if those men, they still can't care for somebody who seems to like themselves, it's to make sure that they know they address the board, and second, it's your ability to control, who has the chairman to control the meeting, by, by also reasoning and time, I started, three minutes, it's supposed to work, I forget what that is, like, whatever, that's, 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 that's what I'm, 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 yeah.
Well, that one, yeah.
Yeah, that we put in, so that's, that's, you know, a lot of people think three's too short, especially lawyers, going on.
But there are times with lawyers, and representatives of the, and we do it, yeah, and, 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 I want to have, I want to have it, I would like to have some sort of, as a reminder in a public, um, that it's, in public, that it can be called, and, 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 and,
Oh, oh, well, I mean, I find, I find-
You, you, I mean, what's the good profile, the chairman, the chairman, I, I, any of this, chairman of the board, I'm telling you, I, 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 I,
Sure, sure.
All right, all right. I have nothing else.
Well, come on, come on, come on, I just, I just, I just, I, 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 I,
Sure, sure.
Okay, okay. All right, all right. I have nothing else. All the favor.
I.
Thanks, everybody, thanks, all this, this, this.